All right. I'm going to call this special meeting of the Timis Select Board at seven oh one. April. Third. This is meeting is to discuss the and review the request for proposals for the engineering design services for our salt and sand shed. I would like to hand it over to Stephanie, who.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, excellent. I had originally thought that I'd be there in person tonight, and then the more I thought about it over the weekend. I really wanted to have access to all my project files in the event that there were questions because. You know, we've been at this project now. For three to four months, so I wanted to make sure that I, you know, could answer questions on the spot by accessing my project files. So I appreciate you entertaining, having me be there virtually. Um, I don't think I have worked previously with any of these current board members. So if you wouldn't mind just taking two seconds to introduce yourself before we jump into the, you know, the, the subject at hand tonight.
I'm Meadow Squire.
I'm Kevin.
Nice to meet you Meadow. Kevin, nice to meet you.
And then Judy Gilmore.
Okay, so the camera's not really panning when you guys talk, no biggie. So I think I saw you sit down. Just as we started the meeting. So I, I guess before we jump into like looking at the nitty gritty details of this request for proposal. I wanted to start by asking the board members if everybody understands how we got here. Is everybody up to speed? Are you comfortable with what has been done to get us to this point in the project?
Can you give a quick recap because I'm brand new?
Sure, that's what I was thinking. I was thinking there might have been a member or two that got elected in March. That is coming in at the 11th hour and trying to scramble to get up to speed. So the town of Tinmouth obviously was awarded a grant through the Agency of Transportation to help fund the construction of a new salt and sand shed. And requirement of that funding is that the town have a dedicated municipal project manager. So Tinmouth has contracted with the Regional Planning Commission. And so I am serving as the municipal project manager or the MPM for your project. So I've been working with Kathy, Gail, and Eric. Now, we kicked off the project work, I think, in early December. So we've been at it for a couple of months now, getting oriented with. The V Trans project development process. Because whatever you folks did to build your town garage. You know, just purge it from your memory banks because you're now using state and federal money. So you have dictated a. A project development process that you will follow using that money. So we've kind of gotten ourselves together as a steering committee, a steering committee. Or we're, we're calling it at this phase in the project, a consultant selection committee. Because that's really the very first step that you'll take as a town is getting a design consultant onboard to do all of the required site planning and permitting required for this project. So that, you know, is, is where we started. And Tinmouth is a little bit unique in that you had done. A fair amount of preliminary engineering work when you started your public works. Facility improvement project several years ago. Um, you know, you'd, I think you'd rightfully at the time looked at the parcel that has your transfer station, town garage, and current sand pile, sand and salt pile, and looked at improving that whole facility. So there was some preliminary engineering work done to. Include the salt shed. And then the pandemic blew up and things went sideways. And trying to get a stormwater permit for the garage and the salt shed just kind of brought your whole project to a grinding halt. So a decision, I think, was made to phase the project and you moved forward and you've successfully now constructed the new town garage. So we've got kind of this. Historic work done for. The salt shed that, you know, we at least tried with V Trans to see if we could. Reduce your engineering costs now by re, you know, basically starting where you left off previously. Okay, unfortunately, because the way you procured your services for engineering for that work. We couldn't just pick up with Otter Creek Engineering and basically have them you know, work with them to prepare a contract amendment and move forward. We had to, you know, V Trans basically came back and said. You know, here are three options for you to procure a design consultant. The town could continue with Otter Creek under contract, but you would have to pay for them with town funds. Meaning their services wouldn't be reimbursable. Because the way that you'd originally procured them wasn't considered publicly competitive by V Trans. Or the second option was you could issue, you know, start from scratch and issue a brand new RFP through a competitive bid method to procure those services. Or the third choice was to hire a design consultants, a design consultant through the V Trans at the ready. List or at the ready process. So my understanding is the committee had circled back with the board probably prior to town meeting and elections and went through those various. Procurement options with you, is that correct?
Yep.
Yes, okay. So you know, there was some back and forth to see if we could. Reach a mutually acceptable, I think. You know, relationship with Otter Creek and, you know, it, it didn't, it did not come together. So the direction given back to me by the selection consultant selection committee members was that the select board wished to issue an RFP through a competitive bid method. So we circled up, we prepared a draft RFP. And in mid-March, I distributed that to the committee. Their comments on that were due by Friday of last week, the 31st. And it was as we were getting close to that deadline that I started getting inklings from the committee members about. The select board needing to approve the RFP before it was issued. So that's what brings us to this meeting tonight. Anybody have, it's, it was a lot, that's a lot of ground to cover in a really short period of time. But wanted to just kind of give you the, you know, the bird's eye view of how we got here.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I have to be honest with you. It was a curve ball to me to hear that the select board needed to approve the RFP. I, I fully and completely understand and would support that the select board would be the one responsible for making any kind of award decision. But I had assumed that the role of the consultant selection committee was to get the town to the point of having a recommendation to consider. Based on proposals received. So it would be very helpful to me at this point if you guys could recap for me. What is the role, what is your, what is your vision for the role of the consultant selection committee? What are they authorized or not authorized to do?
Well. It was my understanding. The, very similar to your understanding, Stephanie, that this, the goal of this committee was to. Put something together to present to the select board so that we could make. A decision and I thought we had given you. But, but is the word.
Go ahead.
Authorization to move forward. I can't, I should have reviewed them, the. The minutes before this, but I thought we had given that specific authorization, but I. Think you're wrong, but also this is also nice just to kind of. Refresh everybody on our new board on everything that is, is happening so that.
So do we need to do that? Do we need to authorize?
While we just.
Yeah.
Read the minutes from December eighth.
That would be great.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
December eighth, the TAP grant, Kathy reported she had signed a contract with RRPC and the state. After brief discussion, Meadow moved Kevin seconded to appoint Kathy, Eric, and Gail to the consultant selection committee, the TAP grant. All voted in favor. This committee does not have power to spend. That will remain with the select board. That's what the minutes say.
So the way I would interpret that is you've, you've established and appointed a committee to get you to the point where they would come back with recommendations regarding award. That's how I interpret that. Um, so the reason that this is important to kind of iron out and, and kind of pin down early in this project is time, right, and schedule. So if I know this in advance that the select board wanted to be involved with approving the RFP, I would have made sure you had a draft on March 14th when I sent it to all the committee, right? But it really does beg the question like, what is the role of the committee? If the select board is going to be involved also in every step that the committee takes. Without kind of really clear parameters on when the select board wants to be involved and when they don't need to be involved. I'm just gonna have to rely on the committee members to be very clear with me. You know, when to involve you. Because there's a desire to kind of get this project moving, get the RFP out, get work underway. So that you'll have more information regarding. You know, what you're going to be looking at in terms of. Current construction cost estimates, right? That's a, that's kind of a big concern about this project in general. So I want to make sure that I work with you as efficiently as possible to keep this project moving. I mean, truth be told, it, it, it's been, it's been kind of a grind just to get to this point. Given the unique circumstances with the previous work done, so. I, I would have hoped that we would have at least had a, an RFP out by now. So. Any thoughts there on? Kind of giving me some guidance on, on what you would like the role of the select board to be kind of moving forward to get a consultant onboard? I, I, for example, are you going to want to review all the proposals?
I would like to.
You're gonna decide to spend money.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I think it would be helpful to know somewhat what is expected to be coming down the line. Like what are the decisions that you expect the committee to be making so that we know?
Okay, so sure. So next steps, we're gonna issue, I need to get approval from the town on the content of the request for proposal. And as I'd indicated in the email, the text that's in red font is really project specific. Whereas the black font is pretty standard V Trans boiler required scope. So you don't really get much wiggle room there. With the exception of the end of the RFP where we talk about the consultant selection. So we're gonna get an RFP out. You need to at least allow four weeks for potential bidders to submit proposals. We're gonna receive proposals and we're going to have to review the technical pieces and rank them according to us, the set, you know, criteria that's laid out in the RFP. And that ranking is going to be done independently by whoever is reviewing them. We will then convene a, a ranking meeting to discuss results. And next steps in terms of generating a recommendation to award. So those next steps are those, the range of recommendations could be, you know, we're, we're comfortable with bidder X and we want to recommend that the select board award the work to bidder X. The other recommendation could be. Well, we're not 100% comfortable with anybody and maybe we'd like to interview bidder X and Y to get more information before making a recommendation regarding award. Or we could say, you know, we're not comfortable with any of these. We're, we're gonna reject all, all bids, all proposals. So, you know, assuming that you do find a match that's reasonable in terms of price, kind of aligns with your budget. You would then move forward with making the award and I would take care of getting all of the contract documents together. You've signed the contract and then we'd be holding a, a project kickoff meeting with that consultant.
I. I feel like maybe one thing would be having one of the select board members on the committee. So that there can be a member of the select board present and. That might help keep the rest of the board. Feeling comfortable at least. I don't know how that feels. How does that sound?
No, that, yep.
No, that, that sounds fair. How many? I, I work for the state, so I know for our contracts, it varies greatly how many bidders we get. But do you have a typical number you see for these type of bids?
You want my honest opinion of what I think is gonna happen here?
Well, I think this is new information, Stephanie, so I think it is good that you share it.
Um, I, I understand the rationale of towns choosing a traditional competitive bid method. Um, maybe hoping to get interest from your regional engineering firms that you're used to working with and, you know, keep business local. Unfortunately, the V Trans process. You know, it, 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 it requires additional work. That sometimes the smaller firms are not as interested in doing. Especially right now, if you work for the state, you understand that there is so much money out there right now that engineering firms and construction firms can basically pick and choose whatever they want to do, right? I could be completely wrong. This is only my personal opinion. Um, I am very concerned whether you will get. Interest in this project. Salt sheds are notoriously kind of difficult in terms of. The money, right? I mean, we've, we've seen since COVID, the prices just go astronomical. Um, so I, I don't, I don't honestly know if using the competitive bid method. You know, you'll get multiple proposals, you know, you may only get one. I, I am a municipal, I am an MPM for a city, a Rutland City project, construction project currently. And they chose the same procurement method for the reasons I just described. You know, there are a lot of Rutland-based local engineering firms. They wanted to make sure had an opportunity to bid on the work. We did receive one proposal from a Rutland-based firm. And unfortunately, that firm really did not demonstrate in their proposal. A good understanding of the V Trans process. Especially as it related to work adjacent to an active railroad right of way. So they chose ultimately not to award to that bidder and have now pivoted and are going to try to procure the services through V Trans's at the ready process.
Which is another option.
Is there a cost associated with going? Doing one and pivoting to the other? Just time?
I was just gonna say, how do you define, I mean, my cost, I'm over budget already, right? So one of the advantages of working with the Regional Planning Commission is, you know, we can absorb some of our project overruns and not pass those on to the towns. So it's a different RFP, right? So you're not gonna be, the, the scope of work and the project description will remain the same. But you're not going to be, you, you're not gonna have that whole evaluation criteria section in the RFP because the at the ready process, V Trans has already pre-qualified. Um, a shortlist of firms and you would just be submitting your proposal to one firm and getting a response back from that one firm.
We put it out to bid. See what happens. And then if need be, change it. To the at the ready. At some other point. Is that something that we can do?
You can do that. You're talking probably three to four months. If, if that's the path you chose, it would probably be three to four months before you were in a position to make an award and get a design consultant under contract.
We're not looking to do the salt shed tomorrow. I mean.
The hope is to get some kind of.
Yeah, that's not the feedback.
A fall, so we can apply for another grant and the grants are due in September and November, I think, or maybe December.
So if we put this out to bid. And you're looking at. July-ish. Of July-ish of having. Is that, does that, is that right? Is that put us around in July, some, sometime in July of having some bids if we're gonna have any?
No. So if we move forward the way, the, the way I've been instructed currently with a competitive bid method. I'm expecting the board to give me a green light tonight. I will then circle up with the V Trans project supervisor. Get his approval on this final RFP that will basically include the dates. He's already pre-vetted all the other contact and this thing is going out like Wednesday. So it will, you'll have a bid period of 30 days. After which we would, you know, we'd either have proposals to review and rank or not. So if we don't get any, then you, after 30 days, you're gonna be faced with, what do you want to do for next steps? Do you want to try again or do you want to pivot and use a different method?
So then roughly you'd be looking to.
And then you'd repeat the whole thing over.
If we had one, I think we'd be able to award in June.
Right, right.
Well, no, because you have the 30 days of.
Yes.
And then, yes, period, we'd be able to award in June if we had an acceptable one.
So then theoretically, we're at July. If we didn't have any, we're looking at July to start this process again.
Unless we.
Had it one, two.
Real quick in June. I don't know if we could turn it around that quick, but.
That'd be aggressive.
July. And you got, this has to be. Submitted by when? September?
Next round of grants is, I'm looking at you, Stephanie.
You would be very tight to have conceptual plans done by September if you have to double bid or double. You know, if you, if you're, if you're going through this twice.
And have, so these other grants that are coming available in September. Are these new grants? Are these grants that are always, like, are there other towns who have gone through this process and then started and then received another grant? I was trying to know what the likelihood is that we'll receive.
Yes, yes, but you will not, V Trans will really, will not entertain another grant award for a project that's over budget until you've cleared the categorical exclusion phase of the process. And in order to get through that clearance level, you have to have completed the conceptual plans. Um, you know, you, you, you guys have a lot of upfront work here. Let me just pull up the proposal scope.
So basically we're forced into using the at the ready list.
Not necessarily.
If you want to.
Get somebody back.
You know, you, you've got.
Free bids back.
You've got a kickoff meeting, then you've got, you know, all of the kind of data collection, right? We've asked that. A potential future. Firm utilize the original topographic survey that Otter Creek had performed. But it's been brought to my attention that there's been some changes to the topography in the area kind of beyond the old garage. So I would cross my fingers and hope that that's not problematic, but I can't make any guarantees.
Dang.
And then get through, I think you put some, you know, put some, your, 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 what's it called, Eric, spoils? For the new, new garage back over there. Um, so you know, then getting through the conceptual plans and all of the, all of the task four resource constraints and categorical exclusion documentation. You know, you won't, you will get your first. Construction cost estimate during the conceptual plan phase, which is task three. But you won't get your categorical exclusion approval. For six to eight months is what V Trans is advising currently. Once that, all that documentation is prepared and submitted. So you're not looking at getting V Trans to. Uh, uh, you know, award a request for additional funding. Typically, until you've gotten that approval, you've cleared that.
So we wouldn't make September anyway.
It, it's not looking that way.
So I've done, I wanna put it out to bed and.
So what happens if we miss this round of grants?
You're gonna apply in 2024.
When do we have to, what is, what are the requirements for the current grant? What is the timeline there? When does that?
I can tell you in just a second.
There are a lot of them that have been sitting for a long time.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's true, right, Stephanie? There are a lot of grants a lot older than ours. Towns that haven't figured out how to move forward across the trivia.
So your current grant terms are June of 2022. To through December 3rd of 2026.
Okay, so missing September and going into. Applying for the grants next year is still.
Feasible.
Feasible then. How do you feel with your?
I mean, we're gonna miss this September, no matter what we do. I, I would like to put it out to bed and at least see if there's any fishing that are nibbling.
Stephanie?
I am a, I am a facilitator for your process. I, this is totally the town's decision.
Yeah, so. It sounds like. We want to approve this and go out then and. That puts us at accepting proposals. Do we have to, can we wait longer than 30 days if we're not trying to do it in September? Does that? What does that mean if we're just trying to get? We wanted to get bids and we wanted to give them, I don't know, 40 days.
Cause with the bid process, that longer.
Of course you can. Yeah. I don't, I don't know if that will increase interest.
Yeah. I don't know, it's, sometimes the things just take. I was just curious.
Yeah, the only time that I have allowed, like, I've had, I've had a project where they required, uh, using a competitive bid method, they. they required, uh, a, using a competitive bid method, they required hard copy proposals be submitted and you know, they had a, an internal uh, bid process that we followed. So it re, you know, they required paper proposals. So in that case, I extended, I, I definitely extended the bid period by an additional two weeks to allow that you know, that that element to be covered. Um, but I, I would highly recommend that um, and you know, we'll, we'll get into this now that we're moving into the actual RFP, and I feel like you folks are comfortable with where we are and um, the decision to continue with a competitive bid method. I, I, in terms of the submission requirements, I think that you should ask for electronic submissions. I think it was a mistake to require paper copies. That, in my mind, was just a turnoff. Like, that's an impediment to interest in the project. It's very uncommon that uh, electronic submissions aren't acceptable. Um, and all the projects I've been working on, um, you know, I typically get that proposal the day it's due electronically. I'm not getting it a week beforehand. You know, I'm not getting anybody asking me for an extension. Uh, so if you're, if you're comfortable with my recommendation to accept electronic submittals, I think four weeks is a reasonable amount of time.
Yeah, I think with the day and age of all the techy stuff we're in. Definitely.
Then I'm wondering if we extended it, if people would think it's more difficult than it actually is.
Right.
And then be afraid to look at it. That's true, yeah.
So, stick with the thirty days. Um, electronic or paper, I imagine, if someone is still not using computers. I don't know why they wouldn't think that.
No, 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 we're, no, we're not gonna go there, Meadow. Not, we're gonna, no, we're gonna do, we're gonna do one or the other. We're not gonna offer the hodgepodge. Um, I, I, I don't, I don't recommend that. Okay? Um, okay, so has everybody got a copy? Let's, let's look specifically at the RFP real quick. Um, I'm assuming everybody has a copy available to reference. So the very first piece, you know, the date issue and the due date, we're in agreement that we'll, we'll do a thirty-day bid period. Did anybody have any questions on the scope of work, section two? Are you comfortable with the prod, the way the project is described, the project description? Gil, this is your opportunity to ask the questions you had posed to me by email.
I just gave my copy to Judy. I'm gonna put myself another question. My question was, um, is this process of the engineer is gonna help us determine the right size?
Yeah.
Another question that I have is.
Well, let's take, let's take them one at a time. So the first question, the size of your shed. Obviously, size is driving to some degree cost, right? Um, so if you look at the second paragraph on page two. I wanna, I guess I wanna make sure everybody understands what we're procuring, right? So we're not procuring a construction contractor at this phase of the project. We are procuring a design engineer who's going to do the site planning and permitting that's required and then basically develop a performance specification for the structural component of the project, which is the building itself. So that you can, when you get to the construction bid phase, basically bid out utilizing a design build delivery method.
So the size of the building doesn't have any bearing on site planning?
It does. It does. So that is, you know, we'll work through, to some degree, an optimal size. A footprint, so to speak, with the site, the, the, the civil engineer who do the site planning and stormwater permitting.
Do you have a size in mind for how many tons you wanna set at a time?
That's the last page.
Okay.
So that's right. That's what they've got down on the last page.
Okay.
So originally, originally, originally you all had been charting like a ten thousand square foot building. And I just shared with you the bid that came in for Ripton in February for a ten thousand square foot building. Right? You're looking at like a million dollar project with a building that size. So.
I, that's the reason I was asking the question is.
How is a tarp building a million dollars?
Amazing that.
Yeah, I, I just, I can only attribute it to a saturation in the marketplace. I, I don't know. Inflation, uh, the prices are not tracking with reason.
So, so if we decide, so if we decide to scale the size of this back, it doesn't affect anything in the it only affects the size of the building, correct? It doesn't affect any?
The engineering's a possibility, I don't know.
Okay, so that's, that's the engineering stuff, all that's, it's all gonna be the same?
Yes, the scope is going, the scope is going to be the same regardless of the size of the building. You're gonna still be required by the V-Trans project development process to go through the, the same steps. Um, okay?
But, but a little bit of process to help us figure out what the right size is. I think that was my question. Part of my question.
It, it, yes, I mean, I think that that's got to be part of the conversation and you know, you're gonna have to you know, I think be realistic about what you can, what you can afford, given today's current pricing. It's not gonna be a ten thousand square foot building. Okay, it's gonna be something less than that and it's, you know, that'll be part of the you know, design phase where you get to, you know, circle around and figure out what, wh- what is a more palatable landing spot, given your budget.
Would this grant allow us to build just a salt shed instead of a salt and sand shed? Or do we have to do what we applied for?
Say again?
If we decided that we couldn't afford to do a salt and sand shed, could we use that money in this grant to build a salt shed?
That would probably be okay so long as your water quality issue isn't related to the sand in terms of sediment runoff. I, I don't, I don't know. I, I, I'm not sure what your I, I mean, you'd have, we, we definitely have to circle back with V-Trans on that. I mean, the intention, the, the reason that you got the grant is that you were gonna be addressing a, a stormwater runoff, water quality issue, correct?
Right, but we could also move the sand pile, but just not put it undercover. I'm just trying to find the options.
Right, and I think that's definitely something to discuss as a cost savings measure with V-Trans. Once you have a, a design engineer on board. You know, that could be part of the kickoff meeting conversation. Any other que, sure, of course. Any other questions about kind of the project description? Okay, so if, starting on page um, three of the RFP, we get into the first phase of the design services, which V-Trans, you know, calls the project definition. We'll have a kickoff meeting, then task two, they basically collect all the data. Um, in order to do the civil site planning. Um, and we, I have in yellow highlight there that ground survey. So we, Kathy was successful in getting the digital files from Otter Creek for that. Um, so we'll make those available and I just have to fill in the to be determined, you know, year that that survey was completed. But I'm, again, I'm just gonna, you know, plant. I, I don't want, I, I don't want it to come as a surprise if, once we have an engineer on board and they start usl- using that. If, you know, there, if something goes a little sideways because there's been changes to the ground surface in that area, you know, they may or may not need additional updated information. I, I don't know. It's, oh, I think it's always risky when you ask a new, a new consulting firm to use somebody else's work. Um, but, you know, w- we have it, it's worth money. So we're gonna ask them to use it and we're gonna cross our fingers and hope that everything goes smoothly. Okay? So then we get into basically all the boilerplate steps of the V-Trans project development process. You know, the conceptual plans, there is a public information meeting required by V-Trans. Once the conceptual plans are, are complete and have gone through the V-Trans review process. Um, you know, then we have the whole suite of environmental, historic and natural resource um, NEPA work that's required in order to demonstrate that you aren't gonna have any adverse impacts on any of those things. And that documentation gets submitted to V-Trans. You, once it's approved and they say basically you can be categorically exempt from anything because you're not gonna have any impacts. We've completed the project definition phase of the project and that's about as early in this process as you'd have new cost information to be looking at other grant funding, okay? So then, you know, phase B is the more project, traditional project design phase will, where they'll take all the information from the conceptual, they'll pre- prepare preliminary uh, design plans. You shouldn't have any right-of-way issues, correct? Cuz you're gonna be constructing everything within town property.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, so the right-of-way phase should go lickety-split on this project. Um, once we've got approval from V-Trans on the preliminary, you'll proceed with the final design. Um, and, and, you know, bid documents essentially. And that basically wraps up the scope of work. In terms of the proposal response format, starting on page nine. Um, you know, it's, it's listed out pretty boilerplate, what is required in the technical proposal and then in a separate sealed cost proposal. Uh, cuz you'll be required by V-Trans as described in section six, section four, the consultant selection. Um, you'll be required to evaluate and score the technical proposals before you consider the costs. Um, so what I'm thinking in terms of the consultant selection, and this is where I, I, I need you guys to be thinking, what's the role of the committee versus what's the role of the select board? So the way it's currently described is that the selection committee is going to be um, you know, evaluating the proposals and the committee may elect to interview consultants prior to final selection. Um, so, do, 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 the consultant committee, you know, is cur, it's currently phrased, we'll select the consultant on or about a to be determined date. So I think we're gonna be changing that to reflect that at minimum, the consultant, or the committee will make a recommendation on or about, a recommendation regarding award on or about a certain date to the select board, right? But in here, is there any part of this language where you'd rather not refer to the selection committee? You'd rather refer to the select board?
So you're gonna, so if, once you get your individuals that are submitting their proposals for the project and you get down to where you're gonna score them and pick your favorite and um, will we still have the opportunity to look at them all?
Well, that's what I'm asking you to decide, so that we can describe that process clearly in the proposal or in the RFP.
Right, right now it says the selection committee will make a recommendation to Stephanie and the select board to award. But if you guys wanna be involved, be involved in the scoring and so forth, then you need to change them.
You should all be involved.
I mean, maybe you guys should be the selection committee.
Yeah, realistically, the three of you really should be on all three of you, cuz that's just a remnants and a level of your opportunity. If you're, if you're on, if you want to get the select word.
Considering that we may not have that many proposals.
It might be really easy.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm actually fine with that.
Yep. I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I think we can disband the selection too.
Yeah.
So Kathy, Kathy, before you, before, you know, everybody says disband the committee and, and move forward. I need you to think about, this is a, you know, multi-month-long process, right? So this, we haven't even started yet, okay? This is the tip of the iceberg, so be careful about what you're setting yourselves up for. So, once you get a consultant on board, there needs to be like a town steering committee that, you know, is going to parent the, or shepherd this project along, right? As the MPM, I'm here to keep you on task and you know, enable you to complete all of these steps. I am not making decisions or representing the town in any kind of, you know, way regarding information that a engineer will need once we're on, he, he or she is on board, right? So you're still gonna need a group. So, I, you know, you may choose to have the select board review the proposals, but what's happening once we have, you know, an engineering firm on board? How are we going to be efficient about advancing this project? So you, yeah, I'm asking you to think about whether the select board is gonna perform that function, that's kind of a steering committee, or is there still going to be some kind of committee?
I think we should consider having some sort of committee, just because we have a lot to work on just as a select board. So if we have a select board member who wants to help move things along, because we only meet, we don't meet very quickly.
Stephanie, wait, can we add one or two select board members to our selection committee? Does it have to be only three?
You, you can do whatever you want, in terms of who should be kind of the, you know, serving in whatever role. Um, there's no limitations or restrictions. It's really gotta, it's, it's, you have the opportunity to tailor this to work best with Tin Miss setup. Right? I just don't wanna have a committee that essentially has no function, right? If all we're doing is asking the select board to duplicate work of the committee.
Right.
Okay, so if all of us go through the um, selection process and then.
It'll be a different committee. It's not, no longer a selection committee.
So, at that point, at that point, we put together a steering committee. And then would you be interested?
Um, but we can do that after we do the selection process, is that your, what you're proposing?
I think that's, I, I think that's a very good idea. Cuz it will give all three board members an opportunity to kind of roll up your sleeves and, you know, dig in on a critical milestone in this project and then have some time to give meaningful thought as to how you're going to shepherd this project moving forward. You know, cuz there will be times where, you know, the committee is going to need to just provide guidance on behalf of the town, and then there will be other. And then there will be other times where it's a really critical decision that the committee's gonna wanna circle back. And have the select board give direction. But if I, but if, if I find that, you know, the committee. Kind of throws their hands up and is like, oh, we don't wanna make, we don't wanna be accountable, we don't wanna make any binding, you know, we do. That's, this is, it's just gonna take a lot more time than we need to. Okay, so please give some thought to what, what is gonna be the most efficient way to keep this project moving? Okay, all right, so we've got feedback on the consultant selection process. So I'd already then touched on the submission, I'm recommending that, you know, electronic submissions by e- email. Uh, would come to me as the municipal project manager. I would take care of getting everything ready for now the select board, so it will just be Kevin Meadow and it's Judy, right? Yes, to, so you three will be reviewing and ranking, no longer Kathy, Eric and Gail, correct?
Can we just be added to that?
That's what I was wondering, can we just be added and then?
Sure, absolutely.
In that way, that way you, you got some expertise then.
We are coming into this.
I mean, yeah.
Yep, I'm just gonna, I'll re, anywhere in here where it talks about the composition, if it does, um. The selection committee, I'll just make it clear, you know, that it includes. The, you know, representatives of the town as well as the select board members. So we're, we're good, okay, perfect. So I'll get all the proposals, I'll get them, I will, I will get them all. Prepped and the ranking form ready for you. I will then distribute those materials, you should be doing that all independently. And then you'll send everything back to me electronically and then we'll convene as a group to basically have a ranking review meeting. How does that sound?
Perfect.
Good. And just for X, uh, you know, as an explanation, the reason that that original site plan. From Otter Creek is included as an attachment to this RFP is primarily just to give. New bidders an opportunity to understand what your vision was or is, you know, kind of. What are they, what are they walking into, right? So it's not really intended to be used in any way other than just informational at this point. Cause. Nobody, nobody who takes this over new is going to pick up somebody else's work. Right, they'll, they'll kind of start. From scratch. All right, so I think we've got all, hopefully have we answered any outstanding questions on this draft RFP? Is everyone comfortable with the RFP?
Yep.
Entertained a motion to approve. Oh, would you like to make it?
Sure, I'll make it.
Great, so approved.
All right, so my next steps, I'd already told you, I'm gonna kind of fill in the, um. The bid period dates, get approval from V Trans to get this issued. And then I will work directly with Gail to make sure that it is advertised correctly. Okay? I guess one last question, could you just remind me about your regular select board meeting schedule?
Currently, we meet the second Thursday of each month.
So if, if possible, I'm gonna try to make the timing work with kind of regular board meetings. Would you rather look at, look at things at a regular board meeting and make decisions? Or do you, would you rather keep this as separate?
Have a, a separate meeting. We used to have two meetings when we were building the town garage.
Yeah, a, a separate meeting would be fine.
And then we can have.
Okay.
Reviewing everything else at that meeting.
Three hours might be a bit long.
Yeah. Uh, we used to meet, what was it, the fourth Tuesday or?
Fourth Thursday.
Fourth Thursday.
It makes it easier for people to remember.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
All right, I'll come up with a proposed timeframe and, and, and run it by, run it by Gail to. You know, just have somebody else say, yep, that sounds good. And then we'll, we'll get this out and then we'll, I'll look forward to seeing you guys at the end of the, end of the bid period.
Sounds great.
Okay, excellent. And please, if there's anything that comes up in the interim where you have a question about something, um. You know, everybody should have my email at this point, please reach out. I, you know, I'm happy to answer questions, I want everybody to be as comfortable as you can. Be, you know, going through this project, construction projects have, you know, a lot of inherent risk and it can be a little scary, so. You know, please feel free to reach out if you have questions.
Great.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, good night.
Yeah.
I have one other grant left.
Nope.
So, um, we're waiting on the FEMA grant, which is the generators. Because we had to do an E H P, it's a environmental preservation, it was like writing another grant. And once that is approved, then we fill out the bid, so my question is. Do you want me to just go out to bid and then we'll have the proposals come to you for a select word meeting? You know, like it's sort of the same question she was asking, except it's not hundreds of thousands, it's. Probably eight thousand dollars, but, um, still, it's the same process.
Yeah.
Um, do you wanna re- review the RFP first? Or can I just go out to bid and then you'll choose?
What is the funding on the grant?
All the money has to be spent by September, which is why I'm getting pretty nervous.
Yeah.
So I would prefer it if we could. You know, I mean, I, we're not gonna hit your, um.
So.
April meeting, so.
Yeah.
Have you decide, either you do an extra bidding on the fourth Thursday, maybe we could shoot for that. I'm still waiting for that, I don't know when that's gonna be approved.
So the RFP for that's gonna be pretty. Some.
It's two generators, moving the, um.
Service.
Electrical service and upgrading it and, um, the propane service.
Are you aware of this other grant, the, this is another grant that we got, okay, this is a separate grant.
I know that we had talked about the generator, I'm just.
Yeah, they did get a grant, all the generators. And it also included upgrading the electrical in the office. And that is what, this is a separate grant.
Okay. Your biggest question is trying to rotate both of those generators.
Right, yeah.
Cause the fire department put it on the other side, we got the water coming in from the well and there's windows and. You have to put it over there though, cause that's where the transfer switches, like that one's not really negotiable. It's this one that, because we're moving the service. I didn't know where, I had to put a little box on that. So I put two boxes on that and said, to be determined. I have a feeling the electrician is gonna say differently.
Yeah.
Please don't put it somewhere where the smoke goes.
Well, we're, we were hoping the back because this back east wall, the only question is really just. Where the propane tanks go and can they be filled and.
And water is not gonna be, yeah, no.
Yeah.
You're talking about the water line, when you say water field.
Right, the line from well which. The line that comes to the well to the firehouse and where it goes out to the school.
Right.
And it's, you know, you might have to do a flat spot over there.
Yes, yeah.
Um, you know, it's on the far side back there. You're gonna have to have a tank back there unless they run the propane all the way around.
Well, I mean. Is what it is, we have to have a tank out there, we do.
So the, the question of whether you wanna.
That's all, we don't.
Want Kathy and I to figure out where they go or? We're not gonna figure out where they go, we're gonna write it so that they tell us where they're gonna go. The, I mean.
I would be, I would propose that, uh, one of the select board members review it. And before it goes out.
I was thinking sympathizing with a firehouse, maybe that would be good for you.
Isn't that, well, I love how that just kind of works out. Oh, so I, so I threw you under the bus on one and, yeah, okay, reset first eighty. Yeah, no, yeah.
Until then, Kevin and Gail and I will review, we'll go out to bid. We will make sure we follow federal program.
And then when we.
And then we'll have them do on a day.
Yes.
A day that you're gonna meet.
Yeah.
And we'll just see when that is and hopefully we can shoot for them at your main meeting.
Excellent. Thank you Kathy. Thank you both for volunteering to.
I don't know if I volunteered.
You were volunteered to. All right, with nothing else on the agenda, uh, I'll adjourn the meeting at eight oh two. Our next meeting is Thursday, April thirteenth. At seven o'clock, six thirty. Moment I said it, I knew I was wrong. Six thirty.
Would you say it was for what?
Thirteen, next week.
Oh, yeah. And we're doing it seven.
That was my bad. We'll just call you again.
Oh, that, that's funny.
And you couldn't know that it's also on the agenda.
You need help putting anything away?
You want me to sign those now or come back up tomorrow or? Yeah. Okay.
All right, not anybody.